Call order and start the meeting at six oh one.
So to ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the government, which stands one nation, a united one, universal liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I definitely this is done. Um, next on the agenda is any adjustments?
No adjustments this evening.
And approval of minutes?
None.
None. Okay. And the next is public comments. And I know that we have a student, John Paul, that wanted to speak.
Uh, yes. Uh, my name is John Paul Alexander. I'm a high school sophomore at Sanford High School. I sent an email on January twenty second, twenty twenty one concerning the schedule at Sanford High School. That was acknowledged at the following meeting. Since then, I've worked with Grace Davy and Isabella Farrington on solutions to get students feedback. I was able to form a petition and gather two hundred and fifty-three signatures from students in support uh to a possible return of five blocks. Grace and Isabel have also made a survey in an effort to get more students' feedback. This survey has been ready and waiting for approval for about a month now. We have not yet, we have yet to get a response as of yesterday and still, and it still has not been released. The schedule at Sanford High School has seen many changes in the last few years. This subject is one that is very complicated and has many perspectives. Once again, I am here to advocate for a discussion concerning the schedule at Sanford High School to be started sooner than later, and approval of Grace and Isabel's survey to be, so that students' voices are heard as well as students. Thank you.
Thank you for that, John Paul. Very well spoken. Um, I know Matt wanted to address this. Did you want to make any comments or anything?
Sure. Thank you, John Paul. Well done. Uh, and I think one of the things it's been challenging with the uh schedule is kind of looking at a timeline uh for anything that's going on. I know uh as uh the school committee has discussed, I think, looking at uh any discussion around the um schedule will want to be something that's done uh with more of a long-term view and also done in a situation where probably won't have any action that will be done for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, but really wanting to make sure that um this time as we entertain that discussion, that we really get feedback from all the stakeholders. Uh, Grace has done a nice job with the survey. The challenge with the survey uh from my uh, from my perspective is we want to make sure that we get feedback, but we're wondering when the best time is to give that survey because we don't want people thinking that there's going to be a survey now with a change happening uh with the next school year. I think what we'd want, and also realizing that with Grace's survey that she's done a nice job with, is it's difficult because you have some of the students who are attending Sanford High School, the upperclassmen, they do remember when there was a five-block schedule. Uh, the students who are attending Sanford High School this year, they only know a four-block schedule. And as you know, the school committee had made a change uh with the schedule to kind of go from a five-block schedule to a um schedule that would involve a skinny block a couple of times a week. Uh, that was the term we used was a skinny block. And so I think uh the, the plan for that, though, is until we've had an opportunity to really try that out, to be able to see it, it would be hard for people to really give feedback uh on that. That would, that would be information that would be really helpful to help guide us without having any experience with that. And due to COVID nineteen, we were not able to implement that. So uh, we want to do this, but we want to make sure we do it right. And we also want to make sure that what we send is the right messaging around that because the last thing we want to do is also um have people misunderstand or uh have um lead people on. So I think we're trying to look at it that when is the best time to uh look at that survey? I, I think there's an, there's uh a case to be made to put it out this spring uh possibly with the idea that it's not going to impact next year's schedule, uh but it's going to be used to help that. Or the idea of wondering, does it make sense, for example, to wait next year until we get going? Uh, probably into October, uh where people have had an opportunity to kind of really get a grasp on the um skinny blocks? Because what we don't want to do is bring this issue up at a time where it really reduces our timeframe to really study the issue. We want to make sure, because I know the last time when we made this change, it was kind of done under some circumstances where uh some of the feedback we felt was that not all the stakeholders might have had a chance to speak out and it might have been a little bit rushed. So that's something I know the school committee doesn't want to do, um and wants to be able to make sure that the feedback that we get is going to be feedback that's going to be um very helpful to have people really kind of guide uh going forward on what, on how we handle the schedule.
I definitely agree. Um, I did, I had no means of having the schedule changed by next year. I totally understand that that would be very rushed. Um, and my reasoning for starting it sooner than later is just because of how much uh that I think needs to go into it and how much discussion has to be made. Because we've seen so many changes that the longer we have to make sure those discussions are held properly is why I want it started now or sooner than later rather than um with next year, even though it won't impact next year.
Yeah, and, and well said. I, and I agree with you on that. The challenge, though, is I, I wouldn't want to give a survey that people give up their time to give the feedback and then come back and say, well, you didn't use that feedback at all. Uh, or that wasn't really taken into consideration when we want to make sure that all the data that we're getting is going to be useful and helpful. And that's not to say data we get wouldn't be useful. I just worry uh and, and from my perspective that that uh could be something that people could misunderstand and misinterpret. And that's the last thing we want to do um for that. I don't think I've done a good enough job of letting people know that this is a uh discussion point. It is something, it's not going to impact next fall. Uh, but it will be something that has to be studied so that if there are going to be changes, we're going to feel like we've reached the right decision and involved all the various stakeholders along the way.
Does anybody else have any?
Yeah, Paul, I would, I would mind making a couple of comments. John Paul, you and I have talked a little bit um at the Y, actually. And I think the last thing I said to you just last week was, I, I'm pretty certain um that the school committee wants to see a change in the schedule. I, I don't think we really know what that means. I, I don't like to even use the words four-block and five-block. You know, when some of us were in the school system, it was a seven-period program. So I think what needs to be talked about is what is the next schedule? And I, I, I haven't heard many school committee members that actually have an answer to that. It needs to be vetted. Uh, it won't be next year, but, but I think I said to you, um, I think you, you, you should feel comfortable knowing the school committee is behind some type of change. But with all, look, life isn't normal in the schools. And to add this conversation, Matt, it's going to add a great deal of stress to the folks that work in the system. And I, that concerns the heck out of me. So stay at it. We, we, superintendent will get on it when the time is right.
Anybody else? Comments? Thank you so much, John Paul, for speaking tonight. Thank you. Appreciate it. And we have next occasions. Um, we had an email from a graduate student, Sam Mercer. And I know that Mr. Nelson wanted to um speak to that.
Yeah, um, thank you, Paula. The um, uh, a while back recently, I received an email. I think it was addressed to both myself and Principal Matt Peterman at Sanford High School. And so as I was reading over the email, uh, it was from a graduate of Sanford High School, Samuel Mercer, who's now attending uh the University of New Hampshire. He has a pretty interesting story. Uh, but I thought um it was pretty neat. And uh, I thought um it would be something that uh to share at a school committee meeting. Uh, I reached out to Samuel and asked him about if I could and, and he agreed uh with that. So here is um uh an email that Mr. Peterman and I received from uh Samuel. Dear Mr. Peter and Mr. Nelson, uh, yesterday it was announced that I am one of four hundred and ten elite undergraduate students in the United States of America who was named a two thousand twenty-one Goldwater Scholar. On the national scale, I am one of three scholars from the state of Maine and one of three attending college in New Hampshire. Following from what the website states, the Goldwater Scholarship is recognized as the most prestigious undergraduate scholarship in the natural sciences, mathematics, and engineering in America. It is a national award that is funded through the Goldwater Foundation, which was instituted by the United States Congress in the nineteen eighties. The national scholarship is named after Senator Barry M. Goldwater, who was in office from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen eighty-six. A famous military officer and politician from Arizona who ran against Lyndon B. Johnson in the presidential election in nineteen sixty-four. As you might expect, I am overjoyed by the announcement today. And I want to dedicate this email to thanking you for your support for when I was a student at Sanford High School and at Carl J. Lamb Elementary School. I have changed a lot since I began my studies at Carl J. Lamb at seven years old, walking into Sanford High School at eleven years old, and graduating at fifteen years old and earning this national honor at seventeen years of age at the University of New Hampshire. I will always remember that if it weren't for the opportunities and support first available to me through the Sanford School System, I would not have earned this achievement or those to come. So again, thank you for opening these doors to me all those years ago. I am very proud to call myself a Spartan and a Wildcat for years to come. Thank you again um for that. So uh, pretty neat. Uh, with that, uh, I also know that um, I read recently that I think the University of New Hampshire also did a press release article feature on Samuel as well. So uh, congratulations to Samuel. Uh, obviously, a very neat, interesting story, uh, who achieved very well at Sanford and who continues to achieve great things as he's moved on to the University of New Hampshire. I don't know, uh, Mr. Peterman, is there anything that you want to add uh as well, since he'd also reached out to you?
Um, no, he, he is very proud. Um, and as his family is of the, the work he's done. I do remember uh an eleven-year-old Sam Mercer walking into Sanford High School. And um, he, he rocked it. It, it was very fun to see. And I know he uh, I, I think he thinks very fondly of uh Mr. Bussier over at uh, when he was at CJL as well.
Okay. Well, I think this was wonderful. It's just nice to hear that our students are moving forward and doing so well in life. I think we should all be very, very proud and hear from them, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Sam for sending us that wonderful letter. Um, okay, the next uh on the agenda is committee reports. We've got construction updates for the high school and SRTC and for the elementary construction projects as well. And I'm sure Matt has plenty to say about that.
I do. I'll start with the high school and technical center. Uh, the contractor was notified back at the beginning of April of the owner's intent to do the work and back charge uh the contractor's retainage accordingly. Uh, we did hear back from the contractor. They were disputing some of the work. Um, but I did reach out to them for clarification and, and they uh did not indicate that they would be self-performing the corrective actions. And so uh, we did utilize our legal counsel as well as um, the architects, La Valley Brenner's uh district attorneys. Uh, there is a clause within the contract that states Article twenty-one notes the owner's right to do the work as follows. If the contractor should neglect to prosecute the work properly or fail to perform any provisions of this contract, the owner, after three days' written notice to the contractor, may, without prejudice to any other remedy, may make good such deficiencies and may deduct the cost thereof from the payment. Then or thereafter, due to the contractor, provided, however, that the designer shall approve both such action in the amount charged to contractor. So we have reached the point right now where we're engaging with contractors uh to self-perform the work and to remedy the remaining items. Um, there are a few of the items related to the roofing that we need to verify before we can make those corrections. Um, since we did uh issue the list, we did receive the balancing report that has been accomplished. So there were items thirteen sixty-five and fifteen oh one for a total of fifteen thousand that we have removed. Right now, retainage remains roughly at three hundred thousand, and that's what we're going to be using to address the items as we move forward. Um, in another matter involving the high school and technical center, um, one of the subcontractors did make a claim for extras for expansion coils in the dust collection control module. And that issue is heading for arbitration. Um, the Chris Denan, a Portland lawyer with construction experience, has been selected as the arbitrator. Our legal counsel at Drummond Woodson had a Zoom meeting with the attorneys for the contractor and the subcontractor to discuss the schedule for arbitration. Um, there were a little bit of fireworks at that meeting. Warren, uh, the subcontractor's attorneys want to have the opportunity to request documents from the Sanford School Department and the uh architect. And they want to take two or three depositions with an arbitration hearing to be held in late August, early September. The contractor's attorney felt that was ridiculous, that if there were going to be depositions, the case cannot be arbitrated until probably December at the earliest. The uh contractor's attorney also noted, and our legal counsel agrees, that we're talking about a claim for a hundred and ten thousand dollars and spending thousands of dollars on document production and depositions uh is probably not the best use of time and money. Uh, the issue was left unresolved, so our legal counsel is going to be setting up um another conference with the lawyers and the arbitrator. And they're going to decide whether to allow depositions and other discovery or not. So, and I will continue to keep the school committee updated on where we are with that. But that's the high school and technical center report. Uh, we, we continue to make some progress on the list, but we also are continuing to move forward as well. Any questions?
No.
Okay, I'll move on to elementary Margaret Chase Smith School. If you remember, one of the uh resolved items, uh unresolved items on the punch list was uh the reseeding of the grass areas around Margaret Chase Smith School. Uh, the conditions weren't right to be able to reseed that last year. The plan originally was to have them come back and do that uh this spring or this summer. Uh, but considering uh the weather and the, the drought conditions that we have, it's not been ideal for the spring. Plus, right now with COVID nineteen uh protocols and our need to use all the available space around the building, we really couldn't uh do that. So uh, what we've asked for is to see if uh they can um, the subcontractor can offer us a credit back on the reseeding of the grass. And then that way, they can kind of move on and be done with it, and we can wrap up the project. Uh, we would then use that credit for us to be able to uh reseed the areas that are necessary, but we could do that more on our timetable to work around COVID nineteen. So we did receive um an offer from them on the credit um back last week. And we are currently evaluating that um uh offer. Uh, we have reached out to Sebago Technics to have them weigh in on that and to see if that's something that we want to be able to accept. And then that way, that will allow us to uh save those funds to be able to reseed when the timing works out better for us. Any questions on that or Margaret Chase Smith School?
No, any questions?
Moving ahead to Sanford Pride Elementary School, um, the site work has resumed. They're looking to do final paving in mid-May. Uh, I was on site today. Uh, we had uh people um from uh the playground installers were up visiting, meeting with the site work people. Uh, we also met with the admin at Willard School so that we could kind of finalize uh the playground. The playground is one of those items that was value engineered out of the project that we used uh local referendum bond funds for. So that is continuing to move along. Uh, another area that we are focused on would be a revised bus parent loop layout. Um, mainly just talking about the signage and the striping um for that. So that is also something uh that we're currently working on. The masonry work is nearing completion. The remaining um masonry work in Area B is being finalized. Uh, Area C is going to have a smoke ceiling, uh, ceiling done and a few discovered openings pending approval before moving ahead. Uh, regarding drywall, taping and sanding is near completion, and Area C will have smoke ceiling pending approval. The painting is following right behind the drywall installation. Our owner painting is ongoing and has been working around the contractor's work. Millwork uh deliveries are occurring and installation of the millwork is happening in Area A. The ceilings, the upper-level ceiling grids have completed. The lower-level grids installation is scheduled to begin this week. Uh, the ceiling tile install is just waiting for fire marshal and code enforcement inspections. Uh, so pending scheduling of that. Regarding flooring, the upper-level flooring, the VCT is nearly complete. The lower-level flooring is a week or two out from install. Uh, right now, there have been some uh delays with our carpets for the admin area and the library learning commons, commons. So we are currently reviewing some very similar but alternate options that would not have any delays. Uh, working on those. The restroom fixtures throughout are about ninety percent complete. Uh, they have started the millwork, uh plumbing uh for the, in the kindergarten wing have started this week. Um, and they look great. Mechanical, the duct install is near completion. The smoke dampers are installed and boiler work is scheduled to begin this week. The cook controls contractor is installing new controls to new systems. The electrical work is keeping up with the ongoing work. The general contractor is attempting, attempting to request additional electricians on site so that we can keep progress on par with uh the rest of the work that's going on. Uh, new CMP CT cabinet had a lead time of eight weeks. This scope was discovered and added recently. CMP reviewed um the required scope. The most recent schedule is still on track. The contractor reported at our meeting last Thursday that they anticipate that Area A may be held up a little due to the electrical panel delays. Uh, we haven't confirmed this yet, uh, but that's something that we're looking into. The contractor did not indicate whether this is going to impact the data turnover for that area. But it looks like Areas B and C now may be ahead of Area uh A due to these electrical panels uh install. And uh, the contractor is going to be issuing an updated punch list schedule uh for the team to work from. And this is going to allow both the architect and the engineers to schedule the various uh punches for the areas before they're turned over to the owner. I do have an update on the uh escalation costs. If you remember, uh, we as the school department have taken the position that escalation costs for materials and labor are consequential damages and therefore waived by structure tones the contractors exhibit C to the contract. Uh, the attorney who represents the um subcontractor for the plumbing on the escalation cost issue um on uh disagrees with our contract analysis. And their suggestion is that um the attorney file a declaratory judgment action in Superior Court and that we have a judge decide the issue based upon record, uh, written argument and without a trial. Our legal counsel believes this is a straightforward contract interpretation question with no dispute of facts. So it is the kind of case that lends itself to having a judge decide the legal issue. It's going to come down either we are right or the subcontractor is right. And having the issue decided by a judge is the most cost and time-effective way to resolve the dispute. Our legal counsel recommends this approach. We're talking about an escalation claim um of just under a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. There's another escalation um cost claimant from a subcontractor for, for an amount just under forty thousand dollars. One thing we do not know is there's going to be other claims by subcontractors or if the contractor is also waiting in the wings. So the uh plumbing subcontractor has invited us to make an offer to settle the escalation cost dispute and therefore avoid the cost or risk of losing with a judge. And so I have a meeting scheduled next Monday, um, May third with our legal counsel and the main Department of Education to discuss this issue further to see if we are comfortable with a declaratory judgment approach or if it is something we may want to consider settling. And I will continue to keep the school committee updated as we go along. But that is the construction reports. Any questions?
Yeah, Matt, based on all the reports you've given, as regards to construction and legal uh follow-up, do, do you and your fellow superintendents statewide share this type of information with other communities that are going through construction to? There ought to be a tutorial of what to look for ahead of time. I mean, communities are maybe looking to get funding for new stools right now. They, school committees, school boards, superintendents, town councils, they, they need to know. This is awful what we've been going through. It's just, it's so unnecessary. Just curious if, if in your world, those conversations happen.
That's, that's a good, good suggestion, Jonathan. We have, uh, there are a lot of discussions that are going on, probably more collaboration now than ever. Uh, most of our work is focused on COVID nineteen, uh, for example, but not so much on construction. I do get calls from people uh knowing that we've gone through that experience ourselves, and they might be calling for uh questions or advice regarding the process. Uh, but that's usually been something I've been more reactive with, but I think that's probably a good suggestion uh that I can bring up. Uh, usually at our York County Superintendent's uh Zoom meetings every Friday morning, we do have a representative from the Maine State Superintendent's Association, the executive director. And that's probably a good idea where I can offer that up. I do know that the Department of Education, they are involved in a lot of these uh discussions and meetings, and they do share that information and their experiences with people, but those are only the people that currently have projects that are ongoing or approved. So I think that's a good suggestion that I can offer that up. Uh, with, I, I know for us, the, the challenge is, i- i- it's been challenging.
Matt, out there in communities right now, they're in line for, for funding. And I think in the fall, um, main school management program, usually at the civic center, goes through in October. I mean, you, you, you should be a keynote speaker at that. Probably it'd be a happy day seminar. But really, I mean, you know, talk, talk while the wounds are fresh. Let people know.
No, that's, that's a great idea to offer that in. As I said, most of our work has really been centered mainly lately on, on COVID, but I think especially as we start to move along with that. That's a great suggestion that I think that, you know, eh, eh, at the end of the day, as challenging as this has been for all of us, if we can help other school departments and other communities and other school committees uh with their process, then that's, then that could help uh in terms of uh uh dealing with some of the challenges we've had to.
Anyway, yeah, okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any comments or?
Thank you, Matt, for keeping us in the loop and keeping us apprised of everything that is going on. Um, and thank you for all the work that you're doing regarding this because I don't know how you do it. I really don't know how you do it. My hat goes off to you. Um, okay, so and the next um report would be for the Performing Arts Center. So I can tell you that um the latest, most important news really is that the show "Let's Go On" at Broadway Musical Review is going to be opening up from the sixth to the eighth at seven o'clock. And that's May. And the tickets are on sale now. If you would like to purchase tickets, you can go to sanfordpac.org and purchase your tickets. And May eighth, there's a live-streamed um version, not version, but it's going to be live-streamed on WSSR TV if for some reason you would rather not go um to see the show in person. Um, other things to know. Um, other things to note are that um the Performing Arts Center is open for business. I know Brett has been working on a bunch of different seating configurations so we can seat as many people as possible. We still have to have every other row empty. Um, so he's come up with a seating arrangement that seats four people and then six people and then eight people and so on and so forth. But um just trying to make sure that we can seat two or three hundred people, which is the most that we can do right now.
Is that the now follow up?
Yeah, about three hundred, yeah.
I bought four tickets to one.
You did?
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, because there's thirty five high school students involved in the production. And uh, yeah, I'm very excited to see it. I know Jack.
My son is, and then Gracie's and Bella's.
Yeah, yeah, Gracie and Bella are too, so that'll be nice to see. There's also uh dance competitions, um, and there's all sorts of senior events coming up. So we're pretty much booked and open, which is a very nice thing to hear because um it's time for us to start having some entertainment, right?
That is exciting.
Enjoy the school and and what the students are doing and this beautiful performing arts center that we have. Okay, uh, anybody have any questions or comments regarding that? No? Okay, uh, next up is WSSR TV. And I know that uh Matt wanted to make a few comments.
Yeah, so we have not met, um, the advisory committee has not met since our last meeting. But um, one thing I think uh we want to look at is around trying to get some more support uh to help WSR TV, to help Sarah out and uh trying to identify what that's going to look like so we can still provide great service and also still collaborate with the city. I think we really want to look at uh possibly uh some of the ESSER funding that we've received, the federal funding, to see if that's something that um I think would qualify for that. And so I think our next steps are um uh to kind of, we're going to be discussing uh planning for two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two and ESSER funding in more detail at a school committee workshop, our next school committee workshop. And that would then also hopefully uh lead into the next meeting with the city leadership team. Um, and that would be on Thursday, the thirteenth. So I think those are some of the next steps as we've started to look at ways now that we might be able to look at trying to support some other um help and and see how we can come up with some of the funding. As I said, to make that work in the short term, but also see if there's some things that can be sustainable long term as well.
Okay, thank you for that, Matt. Um, Sarah, did you want to mention anything or say anything?
I think I'll jump in, right? Did didn't she want to mention something about a upcoming stream for National Honor Society?
It's Wednesday at seven o'clock. The National Honor Society will be having live stream on WSSR.
So Sarah, anything you want to add?
No, that's all for me for now. Thanks.
Thanks, great. Um, there are no questions or comments regarding that, and we'll move forward to adult ed with Jonathan.
Is is Nicole on there, Rita?
Yes, John is, yeah.
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 I'm here. Hello. Um, so are we getting into the MOU conversation? Yes?
No, no, this is just usually a committee report. I didn't know, Jonathan, did you have anything that you wanted to share? Or is this something to kind of hold off later when we get to new business?
Yeah, we're not quite there yet.
Yeah, no, I think, no, the only thing I really just had brief conversation, electronic conversation with Nicole was about the uh MOU.
Okay, great.
So we'll wait and we'll speak to that when new business comes up. Moving on, we have the superintendent's report. Uh, first in line is the student representative report. We've got Bella and Gracie with us tonight. Girls, what do you have for us?
Um, I can go first. I don't really have much just because, you know, we just got back from vacation and kids are really just kind of SAT tomorrow. And then next week is AP tests, and I know it's going to be crazy because I myself have two AP tests and three performances. Um, so those performances should be really fun and really good. And um we'll actually have a link that will be sent out for people to reserve seats. Um, because we have a max of three hundred. And there's also going to be a virtual Zoom link so that if people don't get seats or can't go, um, they can still watch from home, so that should be fun. And then also, um, not really regarding school or anything, but just, you know, general Sanford community. Um, we have the first farmer's market on May first, um, which is an upcoming Saturday. Um, it's from eight AM to twelve PM. It's in the downtown center park and that will, that should be real. I myself, um, with my family are going to have a booth. Um, and we always around this time in the beginning of the farmer's market, we got a bunch of seedlings. And then we have a really bunch of really cool, unique um booths. And they sell some really awesome things. They've some, we have one booth that sells yogurt. We have one booth that sells, you know, more different dairy products. We have a bunch of seedlings, vegetables. Um, so it should be really fun and should, you know, it's a really, you know, kind of a hidden community part of Stanford. So I think that would be um really good for people to come and see, see what they might find and, you know, just make some connections.
Thank you.
Hey Bella, I just want to give a shout out. I do periodically go to the farmer's market and I agree with everything you're saying. There's a real neat little hidden gem in the center of town. Um, great, I really, I didn't realize you were involved in it, but it is a fantastic little uh market. So thank you for everything you're doing there.
Yeah, of course.
Gracie, do you have anything to say? Anything you'd like to add?
Um, yeah, just like Bella, there's not a lot to really add because there was break. So I think just keeping in mind that we need to be practicing our COVID practices, just making sure that the students understand that, yes, it was break and that was really great. But we just need to be doing our part and really keeping um our environment clean so that we can stay in school in person. Because I know that I've gotten a lot of feedback saying that ever since we went back four days, um, they've their grades have been doing a lot better and like their mental health has been doing a lot better just because they're not staring at a screen for so many hours a day. And I just think that as long as we make sure that we're all doing our part, that's that it's the only thing that we can do right now. So, yeah. And then another thing, um, this Wednesday is the NHS induction, which is really exciting. I know a lot of students who are, who worked really hard to get into NHS and they're going to have a ceremony for them, so that's exciting. And that will also be streamed for those who can't come in person. So that's, that's exciting. And then just the show next week, which is, I'm super excited for it to share it with everybody because we haven't performed in a long time. And last year, we didn't get to perform what we had prepared because of COVID. So I'm just really excited to spread the performing arts again and get back on the stage. So, yeah.
Any comments?
Well, I have a question that probably I want to, I want, it ties to Grace just like with the virus and safe practices, but Grace, do you hold on? I think I want to ask Matt a question. Is Matt there?
I am, yep.
Matt, I know there's a, there's a lot of parents who don't believe in vaccine, vaccinating their children and that's, that's their right. They, you know, yet we preach wearing masks and cleaning. It was everywhere in society today, and there are adults that don't want to be vaccinated. But right now you hear, I think, is it sixteen and up in St. Louis? Can can students educate other students? Can Grace and her group, um, I'll say put up flyers to encourage their fellow students to get vaccinated? Is that, am I on a kind of a thin ice for this conversation?
Yeah, I think you're a little bit on thin ice, but at the end of the day, eh, eh, we have to stop short from requiring anything. And obviously, knowing that it can be people with different opinions, we want to be careful on where we come down. But at the end of the day, I do think what you're talking about, uh, and I thought, uh, both Bella and Grace did a great job. Grace did an excellent job. I, I don't know if people saw her on the screen, but I put my thumbs up thing as she was talking about the importance of us making sure we're continuing to follow those uh protocols. Um, that I think it's something that we just want to continue to emphasize because I think it's important to realize that if you look at transmissions and transmissions right now are trending in the wrong direction. They're trending where uh all our counties were green. This last update from the DOE and DHHS had four counties going yellow. And here in York County, we're being closely monitored because the trends, especially with young people. That being said, if you look at the procedures that we have put in place that right now we can safely say, knock on wood, that there's no school transmissions that are happening. A lot of the transmissions are happening, but they're more family based and they're more happening outside of school. And so I think what we can do is continue to show what we're doing is working. You know, that being said, we still have uh a lot of people. We've been able to keep our schools open. We've had situations where there's been positive cases where there has to be quarantining that takes place. One eh eh advantage of having a um of being vaccinated is you won't have to quarantine. Okay, and so that's something that i- if we can get some of the messaging out around that, it's still going to be someone's choice on what they decide to do. Uh, but at the end of the day, if we can celebrate our successes and also give out information for people, then that might be something that helps them. We've um, we've been very pleased with our return to school, increasing from two days to four days. I don't want to tell you it's been easy. It's been challenging as heck. We still worry every day if we're going to reach a point where we might have to uh close down uh a school or a grade. We've been able not to do that. You'll probably notice that many of our other um other schools have not been as fortunate. And we've continued to be able to try to navigate that. So our hope is that is people get tired and there is fatigue around uh COVID and around our um protocols, that we still have to be vigilant. We still have to stay strong with those uh so that we can continue to get this trending in the right direction.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I, I, you answered my question on steroids, so no pun intended. Um, and I, um, Amy just reminded me that many of those students are minors, so. I was thinking about, but anyway, thank you and thank you, Grace and Bella for bringing that up. I just had to take it to step further. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Amy.
Yeah, yeah, it just has to be a family decision and, you know, they're under eighteen and, you know.
Thank you so much to uh Bella and Gracie. It's always really nice to hear from you girls and um you always do such a good job. Um, so good luck to all of the students that are taking these SATs and all these important exams that we all remember taking. Um, good luck to all of you and um good luck, well, not good luck, break the leg, girls, on your um performances also. Um, okay, anybody else? I know Jules wasn't here tonight, so I guess we didn't get to hear from her. Maybe we'll hear from her next time. Um, and we continue with superintendent's reports.
Sure, so now, right on top of that, and as I, I thought Bella and Grace did both did a great job. Uh, we do, uh, as we've started in our last meeting, is to share some positive news happening in our schools uh going on with that. So we'll start with uh right at central office. We want to give a big thank you to our friends at Ocean State Joblots to help keep our school community safe. They recently donated eighty boxes of PPE uh that included masks, gloves and hand sanitizers. Uh, looking at the high school, building off of what uh Bella and uh Grace said, uh, even though the year has been far from for, um, far from normal, the senior class did get together for a physically distance class photo. And there it is, the class of two thousand and twenty one. Uh, loo- looking at S SRTC, uh, the Health Occupations Program has finally been able to start attending clinicals for their students. That's important because that helps them acquire the required hours for their CNA certification. Um, knowing we got a late start on this, that instructors will also be offering evening weekend hours so we can get our students um on track to earn those seventy hours as soon as possible. So we did want to thank our partners, Pinnacle Health and Rehabilitation in North Berwick for allowing us to complete clinical time in their facility. And there's a picture of our um students getting ready to head out to clinical. Also wanted to congratulate um SRTC's engineering applications with robotics classes, specifically team thirty four fifty one. They came in fifth place in the Infinite Recharge at Home Competition that was sponsored by First Robotics. Uh, teacher, um, instructor, instructor Brent Seroy said, "The first robotics game of Infinite Recharge at home was a great success that gave us a feeling of normalcy in a year that has been anything but. We had the option of using last year's robot, but soon determined that we could achieve much more by building a new robot specific to the updated challenge." And they're able to complete four of the five challenges um and competed against teams from all over the world. Um, so kudos to the team for adjusting to the many changes uh that COVID has brought on uh with that. So congratulations to them. And there they are, there's a picture of uh the team. Another picture of the team, thirty four fifty one. And then also SRTC, they had their Skills USA state level competitions. Uh, they had to do it again virtually this year due to COVID. Uh, but once again, our SRTC students uh had excellent results. So uh the following were state medalists. Uh, Lucas Rand from uh Sanford High School took bronze in the electrical. Lucy Arkard from Sanford High School uh was elected to state officer and also got gold for the prepared speech. And Owen Neville from Wells uh got bronze in fire science. Owen Arsenal from Noble got gold in fire science. Evan Boston Cole from Sanford High School and Grayson, Grayden Burr from Sanford High School got gold for the digital cinema production. And Vincent Adornetto from Sanford High School and Jacob Vitale from the high school got silver for TV video production. So congratulations to them. Sanford Middle School, uh, got some pictures to show things they've been up to. There's, they have a flower project for mental health awareness called hashtag crushing the stigma. They brought some creativity to their playground. Um, and then also some inspired uh toadstool artworks in Mrs. Peters' fifth grade homeroom. And there's some examples. Steam Team, uh, an after-school group there at the middle school, making scenes for stop motion animation. And uh also the Sanford Middle School Actors Guild, they've also been working on some scenes from Shrek the Musical over Zoom and what they'd like to call Shrek the Zoomsicle. Using large cutouts of characters, the group has been working to present a show that, while it'll be different, will be certain to entertain the uh their audience. Look for more information later in the month regarding show dates and times and how to access them over Zoom. And they're very proud of these young performers for living that phrase that the high school's using, that the show must go on. Over at Carl J. Lamb School, our first grade team, uh, Ms. Brunel, Ms. Adams and Mrs. Guberty uh and Mrs. Letterers, they've been researching frogs as part of a uh reading and writing nonfiction activity. And there are some of our um students at, first graders at Carl J. Lamb. Moving on to fourth grade, uh, Mrs. McGuckin remarked what a beautiful day it was for their readers theater. They took it outside to practice their fluency, volume and expression. There's Mrs. Belanger's grade three classroom. Uh, they're enjoying themselves, uh, hard at work at reading poetry as poetry, it's National Poetry Month through the month of April. Over at Margaret Chase Smith School, recently, um, Dr. Drew and his animals um virtual field trip um entertained Margaret Chase Smith School as he taught them about tarantulas, lizards, salamanders and snakes. And uh at MCS, they had a uh perseverance pep rally on April second to kick off the month of April uh because that is their um April theme perseverance. They first watched and read aloud from I'm Going to Push Through uh by Jasmine Wright. And then uh two students from each classroom represented their grade level by participating in a challenge that required them to use various skills and test their ability to stay strong. And they were, uh, each classroom was able to And they were, each classroom was able to watch the virtual pep rally on Zoom and cheer on their team as they completed an activity created by Mr. Wilkins and Ms. Tibbetts. I just think that's awesome in terms of how, here we are with COVID and yet we're still trying to find ways to still do our activities. And there's some pictures of them over at MCS through the various grades and what they're able to do for perseverance. And then each of them, each student shared an example when they had to persevere. They did that through a flower with that. That goes along with flowers blooming in the spring with that. And then right before the school vacation, it was Hero Spirit Day. And you can see that the school was filled with doctors, nurses, EMT, firefighters, police officers, soldiers, teachers, politicians, athletes, and inventors. And MCS had a blast honoring those who've inspired, used to persevere during our Hero Spirit Day. I don't see a superintendent there, but I'm sure there might have been one. And then some pictures there of our students on Hero Day. And then at Willard School, as part of their 4th grade reading curriculum, they have lessons on recognizing and analyzing different perspectives while reading historical nonfiction texts. With that, they're trying to seek out all sides of the stories they research, realizing that there are always multiple points of view. And so that leads them to prepare for debates in terms of whether that be in class or at home. They stood on opposite sides of the room, were given a time limit to argue their perspectives. And they were encouraged to and reminded to argue smarter, not louder, to use evidence to back up their claims and to use compelling arguments. And there they are. There's some pictures of them in action. We had some tips for debaters with that. And there was a quote from one of the students. "I really liked the debate because you get to learn more stuff about the American Revolution. You also get to learn how to twist the evidence and that's really fun. I enjoyed that. It's challenging because we have to go against other voices, other people, and their evidence. So you really have to practice and learn. If you don't, it's really obvious you didn't do what you were supposed to do," said James. And so that's awesome. We've got some future debaters there going on. And that is the end of the update. But once again, kudos to all of our students and our staff. It's been a challenging time, but you see ways that they are continuing to persevere and be creative with that. So kudos all the way around. And that's just some of the good news happening in the district.
That was great. It's always so good to see what's going on in our schools, right?
Yeah, this is my favorite part.
Yes, this was awesome. Makes me feel so happy.
Yeah.
Never mind construction. I like this.
Yes, feels like we just drank a little cake.
Maybe like after every like school, then you can like say, this is the great stuff going on, and then go back to the next.
You know, in honesty, we do lose sight of what we're really doing and it's about school.
Yeah.
And.
And the great stuff.
Yeah, and the kids, and we'll go weeks and, you know, without ever talking about stuff like that.
Right, I love it.
Again, Matt, thank you. Really appreciate that.
So good to hear what everybody's doing, seeing those little faces among those pictures. Okay, so the next is in-person learning update.
Yeah, I mentioned quite a, I already spoke about that a little bit in addressing Jonathan's earlier question. You know, as we are trending and it is concerning, I was glad that Grace talked about us staying vigilant with our protocols. You know, as we did get back from vacation, we did have eight people today that we were, had eight individuals that had tested positive. That was something I sent out. The good news is with the school vacation last week that there was no close contacts. As I said, we continue to be very pleased that any transmission is happening outside of school with that. I do think that, as I mentioned, it has been challenging and you see some of the other school districts around us in Southern Maine having challenges, but we've been able to try to navigate that. It hasn't been easy. Big kudos to our students and to our staff and administrators, our bus drivers, our food service, everyone coming together, try to be able to make that, especially our school nurses. A big shout out to them in terms of the coordination of things that they are doing and what feels to be nonstop. It's gone well as we've been coming back. One of the things that we hear about is one of the biggest challenges that it's been for our kids, really increasing from two days to four days, has really been in the area of stamina, just building up stamina because you're not used to being in school four days a week. It's usually been two days. And so that stamina has been a challenge and that's something that people have been worked on as you try to develop these new routines. I think our students are very pleased, obviously to be back and to see other students and to see their friends for that. So that's an update on the in-person learning update. Regarding also, as I mentioned, our goal next year is to try to expand that and increase in-person learning from four days a week to five days a week. We're usually taking the ESAR funding that we received to be able to make that happen. We've been doing a lot of planning around that. We hope to share that with the school committee at next Monday night's workshop to give them more specifics around that in that area. Right now, we're putting together an advisory committee that will include a lot of various stakeholders to also include on that committee. The plan is to start meeting weekly so that we can share updates and get feedback on terms of our plans. We did work hard before the school vacation to try to get postings out there for additional positions that are going to be needed for us to get students back to school five days a week. One thing that, and still, if you remember, in order for us to do that, we have to follow or plan to follow the requirements that are in place, especially around the spacing. Right now, we're able to get people back to school four days a week, those that want to come back for the most part. But right now, we still have a number of students and families who have chosen to go full remote. Our goal is to get everyone back next year to follow those space requirements. We are going to have to hire some new staff. So we did get those postings out so that we can be able to start generate those applicant pools for that. As I mentioned, we will bring up the school committee more in-depth next. We'll continue to update the school committees, but use next Monday's workshop to go a little bit further in-depth of what those plans look like. Same thing for our summer programming planning. Big kudos to Beth Lambert and Steve Bucier as we've been trying to put that together and finalize that. We will plan to update the school committee next Monday at the workshop with the idea of starting to push that information out in the month of May. Beth Lambert, I don't know if there's something that you want to speak to, kind of put you on the spot here. I know that we do want to share some of our information that we have with the various stakeholders internally before we start to really publicize and release all of that, all those offerings for the summer.
Yeah, I've been working with several different people around the district and even reached out to, I'm sorry, department chairs for like some online platforms that we can offer to the kids. Like if they don't want to come into the building, but they still want to stay connected or do something educational and fun, they'll have the opportunity to do that. I'll have it a little more outlined and streamlined for you guys next week so that we can kind of go into it and you can ask me any questions, so.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, that's exciting when we start looking at, and we're kind of looking at it, as we've talked about previously, through a different lens. It's not the old what you think of summer school or summer learning. This is really opportunities to help get our kids back engaged and be able to help where the focus can be also on fun as well with that. So yeah, we'll plan to update more of that information in the workshop next Monday. And that's my report.
Thank you so much. Anybody have questions or comments? No? No? Okay. We're looking forward to that workshop, aren't we?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Okay, so moving on now, next on the agenda is the directors' reports. So we will be hearing from Principal Matt Peterman.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's doing all right. Took a little bit to get going this, today with the return from break, but we're off and ready for the home stretch here. I'm going to give an update on three different things. Our prom, graduation week, and our diversity committee. So I'll start with our not-so-prom prom. When you think about traditional prom, we've, we've had to make some changes and modifications. We've, we've decided that the food portion needs to go. You know, especially if, if things need to get canceled, we don't want to lose the money, you know, when it comes to reserving a caterer, et cetera. We're having it on campus. They intend to use both of our gyms. One gym would be used for line dancing. We're going to see how many hours we can do the Macarena and the electric slide. So, and the other gym would be used for some games that we can do socially distanced. Our health and PE department has a lot of different games, you know, whether it's cornhole or ring toss. We've got some frisbee games that we can do inside as well. It's more or less an opportunity to get out and socially distanced socialization. We'll have an opportunity for them to walk the red carpet and have some pictures outside before they're, before they come inside. One of the things Mr. Nelson and I have been talking about is the possibility of using the binax testing the day of prom, which typically gets us a result on the COVID test within an hour. So that would be another layer of protection for us. You know, so from that standpoint, it's an opportunity for people to, you know, dress up, come out. You know, it's not the traditional dancing. We won't be playing Every Rose Has Its Thorn and doing some slow dancing, but, you know, an opportunity to get out and just have a little bit of fun. And obviously with the both gymnasiums, we have optimal HVAC in there to keep the air moving. And obviously with the meal not being a part of the dance, the tickets will be at a significantly reduced price to what they traditionally are.
I think that sounds great. I mean, considering the restrictions and the embers that we have to deal with.
So I actually had a patient this weekend that's a senior at a school in Massachusetts and she was saying that their school was also doing a prom and so she was really excited about it. She didn't know too much of the details yet, but I was happy to hear that, you know, other schools are also doing it too. Has there been a date set?
Yes, it is May 15th. It's a Saturday. And I did meet with the, with the junior class today and we discussed, they're going to try and get some ice cream sandwiches or some type of ice cream that, you know, the kids could eat, you know, maybe right outside door 43. Have some water, you know, as some type of concessions. But even I remember when I went to prom, we went out and had dinner prior to going to prom. So, you know, hard to say what people will do the day of testing or the day of prom. But, you know, our goal is to provide a safe opportunity to get out, you know, dress up. And we know it's not ideal, it's not perfect, and it's not in the traditional sense, but we've had, you know, nothing for a year and a quarter now. So, you know, the hope is to, you know, slowly but surely creep back to normal. And, you know, obviously with the proximity to graduation and the end of the school year, we want to do everything we can to keep people safe because we know if numbers keep going up in York County, that could spell trouble for a lot of different things, you know, not just us in Sanford.
You know, Matt, it is exciting that you are going to do something. This past Friday, it happened to be at Macy's and there was a young man and his mother, they were buying attire and trying to match it to a shirt. They had two of the clerks working with them and I was just watching and there was just so much excitement. At first I didn't know what was the idea. And then I kind of overheard the conversation. It was prom. So, buying, you know, so there was two people that were just really excited. And I don't know what school he was from or where he was, but him and his mom were having a half of a good time.
Yeah, I think it's awesome. I definitely think.
It's one of those rites of passage. Everybody does, you know, you need that.
When I first heard about it, I thought, oh, I wonder if they could do it on the, on like, on the field and like do the lights and like, but then I was like, oh, I'm sure the logistics would be more of a nightmare for that. But I thought the music could be blasted and this and that, but then it got complicated in my head, so.
I'm not sure that the neighbors would probably appreciate the music blasting until 10 o'clock at night.
I think it's legal till 10, so.
That's on May 15th. And when do the doors open and when do they close? How long?
Typically, well, we will go from seven to 10. Obviously, if we do the binax testing, that will add an additional layer. So, you know, we'll have to figure that piece out. It, I don't, I'm not going to claim to know how many we can get through testing in a certain amount of time. So I think we'd have to figure out the logistics of that first. And, but we've got an idea to set up some red carpet and to have the kids walk in and be announced like we traditionally did out in front of Memorial Gym. So there'll be, there'll be a little bit more to come, but we wanted to work out the important stuff and make sure that we had all the safety stuff down before we got into those finite little details.
No, that's really good to hear.
If you need any chaperones, I'm happy to help.
Outstanding. I might take you up on that.
Thank you.
I'm not sure Jack would like that, like.
You don't want to share.
Anyhow, all right, so moving on to graduation, Senior Week, which essentially is Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. June 9th is our, our graduation date. We will be holding, due to the, you know, the CDC and the DOE requirements, we will be holding this outside. Our intent is to be out on Alumni Field at the stadium. So we've got, you know, the 10th as a rain date and, you know, the hope would be that we don't have to push further back with rain dates. But we will get, we would, we have the best opportunity to have a close to traditional ceremony as possible, having it outside. And so part of all of this is, I'm sure some of you remember marching practice or have heard about marching practice. We're going to have to do this a little differently because we are going to want to keep the graduates six feet apart at all times. On the field, we're going to have them seated six feet apart. When they march in, six feet apart. Part of this is to prevent any issues during Senior Week because if somebody does test positive with COVID, we don't want to lose a bunch of students. We want to minimize that as much as possible. So we're going to make sure that everything we do, we follow those guidelines and keep everyone safe through practice, right up through the ceremony. Our intent is to keep students and. Um, our intent is to keep students and staff on the field and then um, parents will be up in the crowd. Obviously, the event will be livestreamed, just like we've done in the past. Uh, so, you know, the broadcast will still go on. It will be a ticketed event. We will not have the opportunity to have, you know, three thousand plus in stadium, obviously. Uh, so, you know, we're gonna have to, we have to figure out the spacing requirements and then we will um, allow for, you know, a certain number of tickets per graduate. Uh, we're looking at right now about two hundred and twenty-four graduates. So again, that'll, I'm hoping, knocking on wood, that everything will be perfect on June ninth, we'll be outside on the sunny field and uh have a great night. Prior to that, Monday night, we have our awards night. The students will be invited to attend. They will, that will be in the P A C. Um, obviously, you've heard that Mr. Williams has the P A C set up, so we can space out about three hundred people in there uh safely, again with the six feet apart. So we'll have our awards night, but because of some of the restrictions we have, um, instead of having our game night afterwards, uh, we're bringing in a comedian and we will give out the prizes that we typically give out at awards night uh, or at games night, um, after the comedian comes on. Uh, we'll also have a meal in between, so the kids will have an opportunity to eat and um, so another uh good night to hang out. Then uh Tuesday night is the senior banquet. Again, will be very similar, uh, we'll, we have the hypnotist coming in. And, you know, we'll see the senior slideshow and we'll have a- again, uh, food for the, for the students that day. Um, or that evening. So that's, I think, what I got for graduation. Any questions about that?
Hey Matt, uh, for graduation with the potential of um, I guess CDC is coming out with some new guidelines tomorrow that may be loosening up outside activities, will those be taken into consideration for the number? If they're good, we don't, I don't know what they're gonna be. If they're good, will that allow more people potentially to get into the stadium?
Um, I, I've been hearing that uh the, the CDC is gonna make some changes. I, but again, you know, I don't know what the process will be. Obviously, we have to wait for the CDC and the DOE to, to push out their guidance. Um, I'm very hopeful. Usually, right around April break is the time I send senior parents the, the letter uh, explaining what will be going on uh during that senior week. I've been dragging my feet ever so slightly uh in finishing that, just because I'm, I'm kind of hopeful that maybe something will change. Because obviously, if, if things change for the better, that would increase the number of, of tickets we would be able to give to seniors uh for the ceremony, so. You know, we, we know that our stadium uh can realistically hold about three thousand. Um, you know, and that's probably s- including standing room. Uh, we know we won't be able to get that high, but, you know, we would like for, you know, potentially immediate family to be able to attend, so. Um, I got my fingers crossed and I'll, I'll keep a lookout. But, you know, that's something we can always start out at a certain number and then we can bump the number up. If things improve as well.
That, that, that's why all of us looking for is to make sure that we won't be fooled with something if it does go to the positive. That's all we need.
Absolutely. Alright.
And I'll, I'll just jump in, as Matt mentioned, there's a lot of logistics that still have to be kind of worked out here. One of the things we're talking about is that binax testing, binax now testing. And then I know um Steve Busier and I have a webinar this week with the Maine Department of Education and their nurses regarding the testing of pooling testing. And because these are things that we wanna, obviously, these are important events to our kids. Uh, Matt has already detailed the emphasis is gonna be guidelines and safety following those, but we also wanna make sure that we might be able to take advantage of those things, those tools that we have uh at our disposal to also see if there's ways that we can also uh continue to put layers of safety there. Because the last thing we wanna do is we try to put these events together is have situations where it's derailed by any positive COVID. So those are still some major logistics that have to be worked out, but I wanted Matt to come here tonight to kind of give you at least a general framework of what we're working towards, just so that you know that that's our goal is to be able to put these into place, and put it, put it into place for our kids who deserve it so, so much.
Anybody have questions or comments?
No, just exciting to hear some positive stuff and like, so that these, you know, we all thought, we still feel bad for the seniors that graduated last year, but this group didn't, I mean, their senior year was minimal.
Right, and there's something to be said for them to have a chance to celebrate just everything that they've done in the past four years, this year, I mean.
Normalcy.
Yeah, just normalcy. Be able to be together and kind of enjoy those last moments before they all.
And I know that Project Grad is working really hard as well to do something for them as well and with all their fundraising efforts as well, so.
I know um, Miss was gonna talk to us about diversity and inclusion update as well?
Yeah, I can, um, I, I'll keep this part brief because um, the, the committee I've been working with, they were excited and they want to um collectively, they kind of wanna talk uh to the school committee. But we didn't necessarily feel that it was the perfect time because we're still putting things together and getting them in place. But I can tell you, uh, we have twenty-seven members of our diversity committee and that is made up of students and staff at Sanford High School. So, our purpose is to uh better educate our students and staff on diversity and inclusion. Uh, to improve overall education, compassion, and climate and culture of our school. Provide perspectives that reflect the identities of all of our students, staff, and members of our school community. Understand the need and gain the tools to diversify our curriculum and promote diversity and inclusion while celebrating many perspectives and creating unity. So, we've been working since the beginning of the year. Uh, we, we've worked to put together some short-term goals and some long-term goals and we have a plan that I'll, I'll get to in a little bit that uh kind of puts everything in motion for next year, but some of the short-term goals we have is to increase overall compassion and empathy by expanding staff and student horizons on diverse perspectives. Highlighting the need for inclusion that better represents all of our students. And equipping and preparing teachers to have uncomfortable conversations. And exploring and identifying areas where our curriculum can become more diverse and inclusive. One of the, one of the things that was interesting is we had put out a student survey and we put out a, a staff survey. And while it was, it was promising from the student perspective that many of our students feel comfortable talking with their teachers about uncomfortable situations or their identity or uh diversity in general. There still are some students that don't feel like they can talk to anybody in the school about those things. And so we wanna continue working. Um, I'm sure if we would have put out or had the same survey even ten years ago, the data would have been even different than it was this year. Um, so I thought it was promising, uh, what we saw, we were excited. Uh, kids are ready to have these conversations and what we found is that in some instances, the staff was um unsure of how to handle certain situations. And that's where um, we really wanna, we wanna help. We need more professional development, we need to make sure that they're equipped to handle it. They're more worried about what if I do something wrong than having the actual conversation. And so we want, we want them to feel comfortable, we want the kids to be comfortable. And we talk about it in our day and age, how important it is to have civil discourse in our society. And we need to be able to talk about things. My perspective might not be the same as, as yours and it just, it's a matter of being empathetic and, and listening. And I think we need to practice that and when we do that with our students, uh, you know, we'll make the world a better place. So, some of our long-term goals, including diversifying curriculum, so it's naturally incorporated into our classrooms and what students are learning and exposed to. Uh, to create a more knowledgeable and empathetic and supportive climate and culture at S H S. Normalizing language and terminology, and that goes from administration, the staff, to students, so we're all using the same language. And distribute these initiatives across all the schools in the district. Um, I know when we started our civil rights team, the, the junior high at the time wanted to start a civil rights team. We, we provided some support. You know, I think we wanna get to a place where we can provide um not only, you know, faculty support, but student support to the other schools. And help them start, you know, whether it's civil rights committees or diversity committees of their own, uh, to get those going, so. It, it, I'm, I'm sure he won't mind me calling him out, but one of our um, one of our staff members, uh Rossi Kirsten, uh, who is black, he, he talked about it in diversity, um, in one of our meetings about how, when I learned the history, and I'm, I'm not speaking about me, I'm talking about him. When I learned history of the United States, I learned about the history from all of the white people in the United States. Not once did I read anything or see anything talking about the experiences of black people in the United States going through the U S, you know, the, the history of the U S. And there was something about that moment that kind of struck me and I was like, you know what, I, I never even thought of it that way. And that we, our history doesn't reflect everybody. And that's where we talked about making it inclusive, that, you know, there are mathematicians and scientists out there who are of different color, of different races, of different sexes. You know, we've talked about even in um C T E, breaking the stereotypes in certain programs. You know, health occupations isn't just for girls, uh, welding's not just for boys and neither is automotive. You know, so we have to be able to um, you know, keep pushing, so we make it so that everyone is comfortable. Regardless of, of where we end up, so I think that's where, uh, you know, looking at those long-term goals, uh, we're really excited. And let me just make sure I covered everything, sixteen. I got my computer over here, so. You know, a- again, I, I wanna reiterate, our goal is not to change people's minds. We know that people have beliefs. Um, but we want to expand and broaden horizons and perspectives. You know, again, sometimes it's, it's difficult having uncomfortable conversations in the classroom, but I think we need to have them. And, and again, that civil discourse por- portion is, is so important. Uh, before the end of the school year, we have two more breakout sessions with our staff uh where we're introducing more and, and building them up. And like I said, rolling out into next year, uh, we're really looking at, at, at using our Spartan Time um, and our Spartan Time teachers uh who've built, hopefully at that point, some connections with their students. Having some lessons for them that they can go through. And, and obviously, if you watch current events, there are all kinds of things that we can have, you know, realistic conversations about right now. You know, that might be a little bit uncomfortable, but, you know, they're conversations worth having.
It's, um, does this, is it, is, so is this group part of the civil rights club? And do they, do they meet weekly or?
Well, so, we have, we have the civil rights team, which is, is one group. Um, and then we have many members of the civil rights team that are on our diversity committee. So, you know, the civil rights team is mostly focused on uh S H S in general and what we can do for uh, you know, the students and, you know, basically the, from the student standpoint for our school. The diversity committee is looking at everything, uh, you know, curriculum. You know, are there things hanging up around school that uh, you know, creates uh attention that we don't necessarily notice or see that, you know, makes people think we're sexist or racist or things like that. So we're looking at everything with diversity.
Hey Matt, thanks for bringing that, uh, to talk to us today. I remember last meeting I'd asked Matt about for future gender items, so I'm thrilled to hear this and personally, I, I, again, I'm not sure with, I, I'd love to attend a couple of those meetings if, if I'm welcome, but just let me know if that's okay. But from a school committee perspective, we, we ought to be talking more about this. I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled that it's happening.
I agree. I, I was gonna say to please keep us abreast of everything that is going on and let us know um, if we can help in any way or how we can help you, you know, meet your short-term goals and your long-term goals.
I think, well, I think Matt mentioned at the beginning of his presentation, I think ultimately, you're probably gonna see, right Matt, the committee come before the school committee and give them more detail, but based on what was mentioned at the last meeting, I wanted people to know that this, this work has been happening and just, so Matt could highlight that. And I, like you said, I think it's, at the end of the day, I think you really want the committee to also come in and be able to share their work as well.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting because the uh, the E R D right before we went into break, we, we gave a presentation, an introductory presentation to the staff and we had four students that presented and, and gave the intro to our staff. Uh, one was a freshman, one was a sophomore, and two were juniors. So, these, these students stepped up and, and it was very powerful because we didn't prepare their speeches. I didn't prepare anything for them. They came out and they spoke from the heart as to why we need to do this. And um, you know, I, I can't do it justice, so that's why I said I think at some point we'll get the, you know, the committee, you know, to hopefully come before you and, and share some of the same information. Um, and we meet Jonathan every Tuesday at two thirty. And sometimes at eight A M on Wednesdays before uh eighteen meetings.
Thank you, thank you, Matt.
Thank you so much, Matt. Much appreciated. Can I just say that um, it sounds like you guys have been doing a lot of work to really be so clear on your short-term goals and your long-term goals and um just your motto and what you stand for as, as a committee is, it's really great to see.
Yeah, made me proud.
You can tell that you've been working very hard. Um, okay, any other comments for, alright, so we will move on now to Assistant Superintendent Steve Busier to hear his reports.
Good evening, I have a couple of updates this evening. The first one is in regards to the new immunization law. I want to take this opportunity to remind the school committee and parents of an upcoming, coming change to the main school immunization law. L D seven ninety-eight was signed into law back in May of two thousand nineteen, but it becomes effective starting in September first, two thousand twenty-one, uh, which is the beginning of the next school year. Uh, while this legislation does not change the immunization requirements to attend public school in Maine, it does eliminate exemptions for philosophical and religious reasons. Starting in September, the only exemptions that will be allowed. Starting in September, the only exemptions that will be allowed are medical exemptions and exemptions for qualifying students with an IEP. Um, currently in our district, we have roughly 65 students, PK to 12, um, that have signed exemptions on file. Um, back in September, we informed parents of this, um, change in the law. And over break and continuing into this, this week, we're in the process of sending out letters to those families once again to remind them of this change. Um, we did receive clarification in the past month from the DOE that even though, um, we have remote learning occurring across the state, students that are non-compliant with immunizations at this time are ineligible for remote learning and they cannot participate in school-sponsored activities. Um, so it's to be continued, but we wanted to get in front of this and make parents aware, um, of these changes. Uh, but if they have any questions, we should reach out to the school nurse or their primary care physician. The dropout prevention committee, we held our meeting on April 6th. Um, the purpose of the dropout prevention committee is to study our high school completion and dropout data, identify areas of concern and make recommendations to address those areas of concerns or report back to the school committee. Um, we had a productive meeting, um, back on April 6th. Um, overall, our dropout data, uh, is on par to what it was in 1819. We have another meeting scheduled for May 11th and our hope is to come back before the school committee on May 24th and have a full report for you guys in regards to, uh, in-depth look at the data and some recommendations for next steps. And finally tonight, I just want to let you know, we did receive our, uh, prior, our allocations, preliminary allocations for our title funding. Um, for Title I, which is an academic support for K8 math and literacy, we are going to receive $1,094, which is about $34,000 less than last year. For Title II professional development, we're going to receive $203,640, which is about $5,000 more. And for Title IV, the well-rounded students, we're going to receive $112,189, which is about $4,000 less. Um, so altogether, we're going to receive about $30,000 less in our title funding, um, for next year. This is partly, most of it is due to our free reduced lunch changes in our drop in student enrollment. So now that we have this, um, information, over the next month or so, we will be planning, um, reviewing our comprehensive needs assessment and planning, um, goals and strategies for the next school year. And that's all I have for this evening. Does anybody have any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you so much, Steve. All right, moving on to the agenda. We are moving on to new business. Mark 2021 Financials and Cheryl Bornier will be presenting the information for us.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so, uh, I'll quickly go through this. Um, pretty much the same. Um, the general education and adult education revenues are about $30.7 million. And the expenses are about 35 million point, 35.8 million in expenses for a net expense of 5.1. There's 31 special revenue accounts that have activity in the current year, um, which brings it to about $5.6 million in revenues and $7.4 million worth of expenses for 1.8 million in expense. Um, as of March, we've spent 5.5 millions of care and COVID money. Um, the capital improvement funds is three of them and, um, which Matt talked about earlier. 1.2 million dollars worth of revenues with 10.6 million dollars worth of expense for 9.4 million dollars of, of expense. And that's spending down those bonds that we had gotten previously. We currently have three enterprise funds, um, the school nutrition, of course, um, adult education enrichment and performing arts center. There, um, has 0.6 million dollars worth of revenues and 0.8 million dollars worth of expenses for 0.2 million dollars worth of expense. Uh, trust funds have $80,000 worth of revenue and $45,000 worth of expense for net revenue of 35,000. If you go to the second page, which is where we start to look at things, the way we do the budgets, um, salaries and, and benefits, um, we spent 20.4 million dollars. It's $22,000 lower than the prior year. And some of that is due to some of our substitutes are ending up under COVID and they might've ended up under regular, um, at, in the, um, in the event or open positions also. Um, and then you will look in, in the other groupings. So we have purchased professional services of 1.5 million. Uh, property services of 340,000, other purchase services of 2 million, supplies and energy of 1.2 million, property maintenance of 205,000. So all those categories are coming out to about $82,000 higher than the prior year. And then we move on to the debt, debt dues, fees miscellaneous, which is at 9.7 million, which is right around the same amount as we had last year. And then when you go into the groupings of the articles, which is actually how we pass the budgets, um, Articles 1 through 4, which is our direct institu-, uh, direct instruction, is $17 million worth of our expense. And Articles 5 through 7 is about 4.6 million, which is our student and staff support as well as our school and system administration. Article 8, which is our transportation, is about 1.5 million dollars worth of our expense. Article 9, which is facilities, and that includes our cent, uh, construction, um, uh, capital improvement plan contributes about 3 million. Our debt again, which we talked about, um, some of our debt ends up in under, um, Article 9. But the portion that is funneled through this, the Department of Education is 9.4 million dollars. And Article 11 is about 33,000. Adult education, the academic portion is at 369,000. That yields us a total of just under $36 million year-to-date of expense. And the expenses are in total about 122,000 above last year, which is very small percentage. Our revenue is at 1.2 million dollars above last year. The primary reason is the subsidy is up 1.2 million dollars and most of that is, um, debt related. Uh, adult education revenue is $10,000 above last year, which a lot of that is due to the sharing of Nicole with SAD 60. Is there any questions?
Yeah, Cheryl, you made one comment referencing, uh, COVID relief funds.
Yep.
I'll probably not get all the titles right, but in general, maybe not tonight, but if you could, how much, how much are the COVID relief funds camouflaging our real expenses?
Um, I would say no. I, I mean, I can probably look into this a little more. Um, but I think where it hits the most is probably in substitutes area because, because we actually did buy up the supplies and stuff that we normally would buy, um, and stuff like that. But substitutes are harder to, um, figure out. Cause if the person is out sick, but they end up being out sick because of COVID, we end up charging it off to COVID. And maybe some of those items would have ended up being sick anyway or had the flu, regular flu, and so they would have ended up having a substitute that would have had a general fund. So that's where I think a majority of the difference is. Um, and just that we've kind of moved a few things around because of COVID.
But that phrase, moving things around, and in the general community, you'll hear people talking about, you know, the number of deaths are categorized as COVID when it could be something else. So, and I don't talk death, but it's kind of what you hear. I, I, I'm just concerned that if we are camouflaging our expenses and when we come out of this someday, I just don't want to find ourselves in a hole and say, oh geez. So I think you get my gist.
Yeah, I think we've done very, I think Matt's been ready to say something, but I think we've really paid attention to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, and I think where we did take it from a couple of times is we moved somebody out of Title I in, into actually being a remote teacher instead, but we moved somebody else into that spot. So we kind of, when I say we moved people around, that's what we did. We actually took maybe a more experienced teacher that normally would have done Title I, put them as a remote teacher and then filled back, filled that with someone maybe with a little less experience or something hadn't quite been that position before. So maybe.
At, at that point, I'm, I just get annoyed enough. I don't mean in the negatives. But I'm just looking for us to be careful of how we spend the money. That's all.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
And one thing I'd add is at our workshop next Monday, uh, one thing we plan to do is kind of give you a more detailed approach of how we've used those COVID funding. So that I, I think when you see that, Jonathan, you'll realize that in the majority of those cases, we really were careful and incognizant because those funds were not supposed to be used to supplement your budget. They were supposed to use those things that you weren't going to be able to cover in your budget. And, and we've stayed true to that. So I think when you see that, you're, you'll feel more comfortable in terms of, I don't see us coming down the line facing any cliffs when this funding goes away.
Well, Matt, I get it. I, I think the funds that are being dispersed by the government, if not for that, we'd be in a deep depression. So I, I'm, I'm okay with the funding. I just, oh, there's another 8 million coming and I just hope we're uh, responsible in our spending. And I, I'm sure you will be, but I, I will be concerned about that for a long time.
Right. We've had a lot of discussions around that too, um, along the way. And, you know, I knew we're, being a high receiver, I didn't want to hurt our maintenance of effort on anything that went through the general fund. So we've been very cognizant of that throughout this whole process.
But thank, thank you for that.
Does anybody have any other questions? Sure, we can talk in detail during the workshop.
Thanks, Cheryl. Yep.
Okay. So, um, no more questions or comments? Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the Mark 2021 financials as presented?
Yep, motion second.
Jonathan gives me the motion. Amy, 70 seconds it. All right. All those in favor? We are all in favor. All right. Moving forward, next we are going to discuss MOU for the adult ed and Flanagan's driving school. And Nicole Ivy will be telling us more on this.
Good evening. So as you all know, we've been discussing rolling out a driver's education program here at Sanford Adult Ed. Uh, it's something we really were invested in prior to COVID and then came COVID, um, and kind of set us back a bit. But we spent that time really digging deeply, um, into sort of all the logistics of a driver's education program and, um, what that would mean for us to administer, one, a program on our own, um, what partnerships would look like. So we talked with several, um, companies as well as explored, um, going on our own and doing our own driver's education program. I think through that feasibility study, we quickly learned that it would make the best sense for us to partner with an existing program. Flanagan's, as you all know, has been a stalwart in our community for many, many, many years. Um, Matt Willett is currently the owner. He is also present on this meeting. So if you have any questions for him, he's also available. Um, I understand that you've had time to review the MOU or that you've at least received it. And so I don't want to bore you with the details to go over line by line, um, although if it's helpful, I'm happy to.
I, I don't have any reason for you to go line by line. I think I, I shared a couple of my comments with you, Nicole, and maybe you could kind of respond to those.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of your comments was sort of the, um, the, um, I go back to your email, um, but one was just if we were to terminate the agreement, um, to put in some language around there being a 30, 60 or 90 day, um, you know, timeline for what that would look like. Um, we certainly can do that. Matt and I had a conversation today and we were agreeable on a 30-day, um, requirement and adding some language there. The other piece that you mentioned, Jonathan, um, was if the driving school changes ownership and what that would look like. So we certainly will put a clause in that, you know, we reserve the right to, um, dismantle this agreement if the driving school were to change hands, if we so wish.
Yeah. Yeah. Who was the other was something I think I went where?
Um, the other concern that you had was we experienced a roof leak a couple of weeks ago. And so your concern was, are we liable to Flanagan's if, you know, we're having an issue with space? Are we responsible for helping them secure an alternate location? Um, and again, in our conversation today with Matt Willett, he mentioned certainly he would look to maybe a reduced rent if we were in that situation, um, but that we would not be financially on the hook to, you know, rent an alternate space for them.
So I mean, I, I support this program a whole lot. And I just, you know, I've been involved with different deals like this. And as long as they're mutually acceptable, it's okay. There's just a couple of areas I thought needed a little extra ink. And I think that, you know, and Matt, Matt Nelson can find a way to maybe add some of that language, right?
Yeah, those are all good points.
I think my, my point to Nicole was we get to approve it. And when it hits the fan, then they come to us and say, how come you?
Right.
So, but for all, for all involved, it's a great program. I look forward to you, uh, getting it going. And I think, I think this is a mutual win.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm excited about this. Yeah, I think this is great.
We are too. In addition to, um, what's outlined here, Matt and I have had a lot of conversation about sort of the, the dream, right? Like, so this is the practical piece of it, but also talking about what would it be to have a CDL program in partnership with YCCC? What would it be to have, um, you know, a driving program for elderly people who maybe are on the brink of losing their license and need some refreshing skills? Um, those who have, you know, um, driving offenses sometimes need to have points removed from their license and also need to go through driver's education programs. Some insurances will also offer, um, reduced insurance rates for defensive driving. So there's a lot of opportunity for growth outside of just your typical understanding of what driver's education is for teenagers.
So how soon do you need this approved? I mean, if, if you were going to make, modify the memorandum of understanding, how soon do you need? I, I wouldn't really want to sign it as is without a few added sentences. Can you, I mean, is this, are my concerns going to hinder you?
Not at all. We can make those modifications easily and we're hoping for a June 1st start date.
So we have a meeting.
We have time.
All right, cool. Great. Thank you very much.
So we're.
I'm good. I would think she'll, she'll bring this back to us at the next meeting and see if we approve it.
The other thing I just wanted to mention is obviously we know transportation is a major barrier for many of the folks in our community. Many of our learners, specifically at adult ed as well. Um, there are service providers in town that will actually help to support the financial, um, aspects associated with driver's education. And so we're hopeful that in addition to all the other programming that we look to do, that we can also help to serve some of the adults in our community who don't necessarily have to go through a driver's education program to attain their license, but certainly is helpful to get prepared to, um, to do, to take their license test. In addition to working with providers on, um, financing cars and all of that. So lots of great stuff that we can do with this.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone.
So is our recommendation that we come back?
Move it to the May, May 10.
Yep. Then we, um, make those changes and then we can go ahead and.
We table it until May 10.
Tableting it. Okay. Um.
And, and this is the second time she's had to wait for me in the meeting. We think to move it up on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be doing this.
That's okay.
And again, you're over two of us so far, so.
She was like, two hours? That's what I'm getting on? So we can leave the vote on tabling it or anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We, we are tabling.
Yeah, we're all agreed on. Okay.
Anything else you want to share with us, Nicole, or?
Briefly, yes. No, that's all. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you, Nicole.
All right. So now we're moving on to old business. Anything?
Yeah, I have some res, res, uh, no old business, but I do have some resignations to announce. A couple from our kitchen personnel, uh, back at the beginning of the month. Uh, Jean Badger from the high school and Star Cody from Carl J Lamb School. Also a couple, uh, teacher resignations, uh, at the end of the school year. Molly Kaiser, science teacher at the high school. And a fifth grade teacher at Sanford Middle School, Cheryl David, is retiring, decided to retire at the end of the year. So, um, a big thank you to, um, all of them for all of their contributions and help, uh, to the Sanford School Department. Uh, moving on, I've got some staff appointments to make, a lot of these around, uh, summer school positions as well. as well as theater technicians for the Performing Arts Center. And coaching, Stanford Middle School coaching boys track as a replacement will be Josh Allen. Coaching, um, coaching girls track as a replacement will be Kristi Peters. Coaching eighth grade softball, Alicia Sloboda. And coaching JV boys across at the high school, Buddy Whitehouse. And then in terms of some of our summer school appointments, an extended school year ed tech, Tony Bendell. A, um, uh, extended school year teacher, Brittany Abrudamesso. And then we also have a, um, summer school Tammy Hilton, that will be Title One Jump Start teacher. Uh, we also will have Angie Labby is going to be the Title One Jump Start Coordinator for summer school. Jenny McLendon is going to be a Title One Ed Tech for summer school. And Moira O'Sullivan is going to be a Title One Ed Tech for summer school. And Deidre Walsh will be a Title One Ed Tech for summer school. And Kristen Wector is going to be a Title One Jump Start teacher for summer school. Our Performing Arts Center Theater Technicians appointments include Lindsay Brown, Grayden Burr, Liam Daly, Ben Jankowski, and Scott Traubaus Borst for our Theater Technicians. And then some other people who we're going to be hiring, high school kitchen personnel. A replacement will be Linda Bolduc. Uh, we also have a COVID custodian sub for thirty hours as a replacement, James Clemente for that position, a COVID custodian sub for forty hours, Armand Dorian in that position. And I think that is pretty much it for all of our staff appointments. We do have some staff transfers I'd like to announce. Janet Bright is moving from five hours a week at the high school, increasing her hours at the high school to six point two five. And then Tracy Corovo is moving from the high school, reducing her hours from six point two five to five hours a week. Nyla Labear is going to move from the COVID custodian to second shift custodian in Sanford Middle School. Mona Lamb is going to be moving from, increasing her hours at the high school kitchen from five to six point seven five. Joel Landry is going to be doing the same thing, increasing her hours at the middle school kitchen from five hours to six and a half hours. Also transferring a COVID custodian to a Sanford High School second shift custodian, Cassandra Minke. And then also a, uh, transferring a forty hour COVID custodian to, uh, working in the kitchen at Carl J. Lamb, five and a half hours a week. And that would be Audrey Turner.
Okay. Comments, anything?
No staff nominations, uh, this meeting to speak of.
Okay, great. Moving on, we are now policies and procedures. We've got a second reading of Procedure DJE-R, federal procurement administrative procedure.
Thank you, thank, thank you for saying all those letters for me tonight. We'll have to tell Don that when he comes back next week. Tonight we have a, a second reading of Procedure DJE-R. Um, the proposed federal procurement procedure governs the procurement and purchase of property, goods and services using any federal award in whole or in part that is subject to the Uniform Brand Guidance. Um, we have been following this procedure, but it was not part of our policy manual. And so this procedure takes care of that for us and I recommend approval.
Right.
Will you make a motion to accept second reading?
Great. Do we all, are we all in favor?
Yes.
All right, we're all in favor. Who adopted it?
So it's been a very, we want to put that in first reading.
I would agree. I was like, I don't remember.
Well, Steve's got to make it a little bit more exciting. We're going to remember those things.
Of course, it's like at the end of the meeting too, you're like, picture something.
Blame on Steve.
All right, and then moving on to items for future agenda. Are we doing, um, well, we have the diversity and inclusion coming in to talk to us. And we're also going to have Nicole come in and discuss with us regarding the changes for the.
Exactly, driving school agreement.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody would like to?
So I would have a question for, for Matt. When we, we talked about someone coming in and talking to us through Zooming in, when I hear the Performing Arts Center is opening for larger groups, at, at some point in the near future, it'd be great to have a school committee meeting at Performing Arts Center with some of these larger groups, now that we can do that. It's just, you know, it's, we're sitting in this room and you're on this big screen and just, if we could have some live meetings, it would be really exciting. So I just said.
A second thought.
You're on the same chair, so you can do it too, won't you?
You can pass policy to them.
Right, I can if I want to.
You and Don, the conversation, Paul, you and Don for the conversation.
All right, so I think we should add that for conversation. Having some in-person meetings.
With, with, with interested parties.
Oh, that would be really, really good, I think. All right. Everybody in agreement? Yes? Can we move on? Calendar announcements?
Yeah, a couple, one cha-, uh, just, uh, one change on there. We're looking at a school committee workshop next Monday, May third. Uh, remember in May with the recent Patriots Day holiday, we did move the May meeting from the first Monday to the second Monday. So school committee meetings in May will be on May tenth and May twenty fourth, but we will have a workshop on May third. That start time for that workshop, I'd like to have that at four thirty just because, there is a safety committee meeting that day. Um, and so I'd like to be able to move it from a four o'clock start for the workshop to four thirty, uh, so we don't overlap with that meeting. Um, for that, this Friday, we have SRTC Advisory Committee. That's scheduled for nine following the York County Superintendent's Zoom meeting, which starts at eight. And, um, I mentioned the safety committee is going to be next Monday at three fifteen. Wellness Committee is going to be on Monday, May tenth at three fifteen. Our city council, there'll be a, a budget item. Our budget will be an item at the city council meeting on Tuesday, May eleventh. And, um, SRTC Recognition Night, put that on your calendars. That will be Thursday, May twenty seventh.
And Matt, two things. On the city council, it says five PM. Is that right?
I don't know. I saw that too. I, I have to check that. Typically, they go at six PM.
Yeah. The other is SRTC Recognition Night, how, how is that going to be handled? Is that live? Is that Zoom? Is that a quick?
Uh, I think right now that's going to be a discussion item for this Friday's Advisory Committee meeting. So we'll be able to announce that. They are looking at, uh, a couple of different options. One could be in the Performing Arts Center where there would be live audiences, but they'd have to break it up because they wouldn't be able to get all programs in there at once. But it would still be streamed. Another thing that they're looking at is also holding it outside on Alumni Stadium as well, uh, similar to what graduation is doing. So I, those are things right now that have been talked about, haven't been finalized. I do expect on our May tenth meeting to have Kathy come and give you an update on some of that information similar to what Matt Peterman did tonight, so we can put that on your radar.
Can I?
Yes, you can. You can talk all night.
Thank you. I mean, John doesn't want to get anywhere at all. Just on, on Thursday, the twenty seventh, for some reason in my calendar, I originally had the SRTC Recognition Night on the twenty seventh and have an arrow that says it's now on the twenty sixth. I'm not sure why, but it's like a conscious effort of it got, so I don't know if it got changed or, or what, but I just.
It could have been tired.
It could have been, but I usually am not. Like, I mean, my calendar doesn't lie, so.
Yeah, we all, you may, you may be right, um, Amy, because you're on the SRTC Advisory Committee. So we'll have to, I'll have to check on that to see if it, that is an error and it should be the twenty sixth. I am not sure. I'll, I'll have to check into that further.
All right.
Matt, we're really trying to stretch it out because John, who needs to leave, so we're going to ask a lot of questions. So.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
In the, uh, Recognition Night gets me thinking about graduation, if it ever held inside. When we built the school, there was discussion about having big screen, you know, the Jumbo Tron type thing in the gymnasiums. Is, is there ever any more discussion about that? So the live performers in the Performing Arts Center could be streamed into the gymnasiums for overflow crowds?
I think what we had talked about, Jonathan, pre-COVID was if we did have our graduation, for example, scheduled to be outside and then weather didn't permit and we had to move it inside. I expect that the ceremony would take place in the gym and, because you can get more people in the gym and then it would be streamed into people who, who, who couldn't be in the gym due to, um, limits to, um, to, uh, space limits or, um, people limits, that then it could go to, you could have it streamed into the Performing Arts Center.
Okay.
That was what, that was originally how that was kind of handled, uh, with that of trying to, uh, put it in there. One of the things we look at with the, of the Performing Arts Center is just in some ways easier right now with COVID. Brett has done a nice job of really having that kind of laid out for you to really make it easy for where you know your seating is.
And, all right, so that concludes the meeting tonight. Yes?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
I'd like to discuss them.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second? Yes, we do. Are we all in favor?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Who seconded that?
One of us, Jonathan.
Jonathan did.